Okay, she's on set to start. I'm going to stop this meeting of the council board in the session with the governor. Thank you for your patience. You are experiencing technical issues and we are important in this. This is not our experience at this time.
Not long ago.
Just a second.
We need to be compliant to the agenda to accommodate the requirements of the minutes. We need to be committed by the committee from three thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-three to allow this to be. Helping you to do some of the people who are helping to meet certification to work in that way. Two armaments are required on this.
Hi, I'm Horace.
You have any questions? All of you there?
Aye. The number one is to accept the council board registration, or the women's say the thing of all concerns. If I could have a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those who see? Um, I'm still asking, what's your opinion on the question?
Madam, it's a council board registration. Certain events, but as well as working, it says the thing of all concerning that's the. David, I'll take a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The first, that same. The body of community, particularly when maybe we have this found in the interest of.
That's my mind, except for the amendments from the council board of registration meeting. David, I'll take a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The first, that same. We have one right ignition, right? Here at Los Angeles, who they see this year, there is a point two to twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, state to the. What we like to say here, or share, about witches. We wish you good luck in your upcoming year. We have your presentations, well, here. Another one, report, we have the fourth quarter annual. And we have, um, the police changes to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, it's September. Now, my book is something difficult to change, so I'm going to put it for the shift.
I'll take a second, David.
And I think we're seeing, I did not assume the reason we are changing this is to change and improve rate. People inside with the, it's what's surrounding us. All those in favor?
Aye.
I suppose, that same.
Madam, I'm a book, it's something difficult to change this in twenty-four, twenty-five, comes in the registration meeting. David, I'll take a second.
The reason we are doing this, we want that. That's a certain firm graduation day, having thrown aside, because I recognize the reading. So we are moving along, we need to continue after one of these things on graduation. All those in favor?
Aye.
The first, that same. You can, you will need to be prepared, you need to. Thank you. My response is self-explanatory. I would like to bring your attention to the legislative laptop. From the head of the association boards committee, which talks about substitute nurses in the state of two. Which is a massive mandate. That the board of education post all the options, the amount to the problem. That are going to be looked at during the year. Um, this is important for us to know because the rates that we have traditionally have to look at in a package, they're going to be public. And there may be some of that thing of information since that information will be shared. So over the next couple of four weeks, you're going to get what we typically share with the board. And I will be coming to you to make some decisions about whether to keep field should be or should not be. When you share with the public, for example, if we were to have an exit interview. There is enough information or input to the information in those types of documents who are viewed exactly any type of reference to a staff member or to a school. It would render the individual. So we may want to consider moving those exit interview documents off of the board agenda. To allow an under-dacted version to go to board meetings to achieve efficiency or the advantage. Another would be homeschooling, if someone makes their classes homeschool, they can charge name, parent's name, address. Will be rejected, we won't get the law, I'm going to need another part of the charges. So we may want to just include the non-adopt students that are shifting over to homeschool. For providing the board outside of the board, we will report on this request for homeschooling. So to know more about which children, from which children, and what will be the effect of the. Um, but things may come up over the next several months, where we may say we want to consider that. So as you get reports from me, you'll see that I'm paying your attention. This is something that the board would love to take off of the board agenda and make into a, a little bit of part of the board meetings that you can see on the board meeting. And I hope that you believe. The rest of my report, um, under course science itself. There are multiple reports in the report section. Center School Gymnasium, uh, we are at a point now where we will be striking that floor and it will be, uh, open and ready for hopefully before, um. Hopefully five or six to the students at the board, and so how they drive and ready to go, people who are at the points. Um, so that have been happening, I mean, this week, their families, which is part of the early part of this. Uh, the blue lane line update, we have now, um, abated all the processes from the floor in the beginning of course. All new floor has some legs, different some backs, all the furnishings that everyone needs because of the abatement have been turned. And teachers working in two days to choose, um, when they'd like to have the soil consistent. Particularly for the parent guidelines, so women's and the group of way that they would desire it to do so. And they were designed for an hour dedicated time for crew facilities to help them move their furniture and saving money in the class. So we are, right now, we are, um, at a very, very. Just moving and reposition purchases. Uh, the solar exploration are timeline report, uh, so in progress at the town project. Uh, the town has sponsored Energia, which is a company that specializes in funding food, solar contractors, um, exception, solar contractors. Or we can't get our properties in these counties, and then we go to American, so there. And then our laptop, uh, school, uh, arrogant for five people, we, we got data, so we're waiting for, um, initially some grant. To open up, and I hope that it's, uh, very close to being ordered because there's been. Solicitations, for, um, contractors who want to, 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 to. So, that's why I was, since we don't have the resources. The other reports, you got our already recovered report, which is getting to the board every year by already covered. Specialists, and we also got the report, um, Connecticut Republican C J R. For the debate on New York District, um, assisting our students and assisting their classes. What they do for the charge. We have a new series of reports today. We have contracts, most of these are annual contracts, without bringing your attention to the enhanced system therapy. Um, certified athletic chain contract, research contractors, because we were able to use. The different contract, we can share powers, they're not on this, so the means are across, it's across, uh, the chain of adults. Then we must, they changes and variations on any one, sort of the engine of what the degree levels, athletic chains need, so they put, athletic chains in a different. Um, level of. So we are now sharing that little chain, but we have the science, just what Johnson's powers. Um, so you'll see when you join the four signs, there'll be other organization that knows. The rest are, uh, things that are happening with the projects that are releases for, um. An update, from the real, uh, that is updated when we will. Building, so we don't do the building directly, we do the. Uh, when it ramps, we have financial support program, equipment assistance grant that was commended by the service director. Uh, just to point a note, our new service director, uh, has taken another positioning and probably to have a new service director, but. The order of events doesn't shape that directly because we need to share the service director. So we walk into the lobby, they're very, very heated, and as the listeners notice, that we are fully funded. So, Jennifer, um, so, 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 we need the service director to share with the. So that was made by the whole, the admin person, and Jennifer will take over the going on, traditional conditions. The four fundraisers, uh, I have a donation for you. And then because of time of the year, where we are, uh, we have the thank you person that's fully qualified for some of this. We have a transit. And then we have a summer initiation assignment. Followed by, uh, sense, we are some, so there's going to be thirty of this, of the time they're coming. We have four resignations, with the point like you said, we've learned that these four resignations have not yet been filled, so they are susceptible to some of these. Uh, retirement, that is, uh, bearing information to us, that is also another condition we need to do. Getting notes on the nation's, now, because of this time of the year, but we do have. Uh, for the normal science. So I asked the board of education, this time, knowledge, because you personally.
Madam, I'm a good, now, the student being, you know, the person all specifically, you know, the parents, or the parents of the major, the girls, that we have all seen. Or in a while, where the people are personally certified, not to. David, I'll take a second.
You have any questions?
Oh, I think we're looking. With that, and we. Parliament station, parliament, because I have many, we don't have four stations, you know.
No, it was originally rumored that he had some, the term, I think she's put, women at center school, and that woman was. You know, I, I asked about that in the event, so it's not happened. Um, what this would be for, the solar is handled, put up either, I'm looking around, on the science. Um, what we're working on now is, we have the E-burger, is at the point where putting up solar panels on it. Would either way on, on the seat or the building store, we've got enough money, but we can save the. Because it's in this, we can get that back reports in this, we don't have this, you know. So we're looking to other ones, certain ones, which could be those in parks, and there's always certain park that we do. To any of these settings, but we would infer in the form soon. Or.
I didn't know, probably talking about.
No.
I was, because, we need to be on, people driving, partners, a little bit, and they're right.
Yes.
Um, and that's his best friend, but, 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 but.
All right, well, uh, the first of the, you have to, for instance. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
That same. We have one, it's a meeting, uh, a few days discussing medical relief, and we need not, not a new chance for student teachers to report at this time, however, we expect at least two. In this. Our current field trip, so we are naming a field trip to the E for our class, hoping for our students. But there are any questions about that field trip, if there aren't, then I ask that the board, like, second through the field services.
Madam, I'm a book, that the, 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 the last key to do it, I thought. David, I'll take a second.
You have any questions, David? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The first, that same. We have no, uh, requests to say, or to sell, or to sell, or to buy, that would be the. We need to believe what's in the news. We both want to meet that in June, and again, in July. Excuse me, in July, August, assuming we'll be joining ports and the department ports, and both of them are given tonight on the agenda. And I've asked that the board of education, which is accepting the food, both of them need to be ports as presented. And I asked that the board of education, which would accept and include both of these reports as presents.
Now, the number of what you're accepting, the basis of the initial course is the temperature. The policy thirty four, thirty two and thirty four, thirty three. Does this not show up in the operation? It's like it's sort of supporting the administration. That's the potential for the future of the group and. If I could say.
Do you have any questions? All those in paper?
Aye.
The post, that same. And it's adding on your, my budget of the movie. Question on the agenda, this proposed motion. Relates to article thirty eight of the chief of the transification association contract. Specifically, the, um, the article that is starting. By massing that the board of education. Allowed. That due to the passing of the entire teacher, they're doing on. Um, prior to payment, um, that means to receive the development of this amount earned. While this is time to be sparring with payment. Not seeing the word, um, consider this as a standard, so contains. And allowed for that final payments to be, um, directed positive. Posses, the decision.
Now, the number of what you love. You know, that due to the passing of the entire people willing to grant on part of the three months of the demand. Simply quoted in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred fifty six dollars in attempts. This happens into the same, that same circumstance, that's a fourth of article thirty eight. Section thirty one, where we need eighteen thousand five hundred fifty six dollars to make the deal without prejudice. Finish the main, this is, uh, can you say go on, you go with the boss? If I could say.
Do you have any questions? All those in paper?
Aye.
The post, that same. And, um, the field processing report from the Connecticut. I don't know if I'm getting any questions.
The policy many met today by freedom and. We do that again. Um, let's start, um. And, uh, both the policy thirty five, thirteen point one, the aspect. By people's vote of the number of persons before the education. If I could say.
The indices, uh, regarding, you know, energy companies and so that we've been looking at. And it's looking fine. And maybe the many, but it sounds like some of these, that everything is considered going forward. And it's two years, it was already long since I've been in the comment. Good and good and have any questions? If you're learning this. We had a reading thought that the summer temperatures would be maybe in, uh, this is a very. We, we've got to be this. Then you need one seventy. Seventy. So if we were to have any activity or anything we want to do, we don't need to. Seventy. He was already decided, so he would be in sixty eight. We thought it would be sixty five, but we knew it would be back to the first. So it was sixty eight. And then when we are, um, the leading activities also sixty eight. So we'll be able to go and say we tested it and the process of temperature that we can shoot. Without looking, we can be cheap, local venture, hopefully one.
That's what it's for, it's it's hard.
I'm not making money.
And to choose about this. This is expensive.
You have any questions, the president? So that is asking if we could adjust the supply of the policy clearly section. So she can follow along with what, um, policy is working in the environment. Thank you. All those in paper?
Aye.
Aye. The post, that same.
Always working that straight. And I'm a book that's something that changes the policy thirty five, thirteen point one. If I could say.
All those in paper?
Aye.
The post, that same.
Uh, Matt, when I'm working. It will to, uh. The permanent policy forty one, eighteen point five. A people's vote of the majority for the registration reading. If I could say.
Again, this is such an update to this power case, you allow us to currently be talking to the senior. If you're going to have anything regarding that. All those in paper?
Aye.
The post, that same.
That number of accepting who the change in the policy. Eighteen point five. If I could say.
All those in paper?
Aye. That number of our goal to policy forty one, eighteen point five. Forty three, point fifty one, the best. But people's vote of the majority for the initiation. If I could say.
Then we're updating the policy, please define, so that we can accept the new community. All those in paper?
Aye.
Aye. The post, that same.
That number of our book, it's something that you change the policy forty one, eighteen, one. If I could say.
All those in paper?
Aye.
The post, that same.
That number of our policy sixty one, forty one, fifty one, that's, uh. The people's vote of the majority for the meditation. If I could say.
Then we're updating the policy to be in time to the bathroom soon here. All those in paper?
Aye.
The post, that same.
That number of. Something for the change of sixty one, forty one. Three, three, one, as. If I could say.
All those in paper? Aye. The post, that same.
That number, the voting of the policy. Sixty one, forty one, three, three, two, four. Also known as sixty one, forty one, twenty three, two, eight. The best star, by people's vote, the number of persons for the protection. If I could say.
Well, it's to update the number of policies. All those in paper?
Aye.
The post, that same.
Well, it's something that we change the policies, one, forty one, three, four. That's the sixty one, forty one, point three, two, eight. If I could say.
All those in paper?
Aye.
The post, that same.
Finished the policy, maybe we have no first, second rate or action. Aspect for these. Thank you. That number of our goal to enter a second session for purposes of finalizing the containment for superintendent schools and by municipal superintendent schools. Into the second session. If I could say.
All those in paper?
Aye.
Thank you very much for the speaking and the presentation.